I'm sure my bad hearing has a little to do with it.
Only the trains you hear, that's right. Thunder and lightning we don't get. Kirsten, how far do you have to go to home?
I live in Bremen now.
Oh, so it's not...
Hey, so you're cool too. Why don't you, uh, change?
Are you cold?
Yeah, a little bit. Blame it on me.
But I'll do it.
Well, I see you sitting there hooking yourself and shivering.
But you know, it's hotter outside than it is in here right now, honestly.
It's changing.
I kind of know some, do you want me to cut the fans off?
Yeah, it works for me. See, Ron and I have this weather detector system.
Right?
Yeah, we can tell you whether which way the wind's blowing.
Yep. I'm always freezing, so I'm not a good candidate to tell you what is going outside.
Well, try shaving off all that hair and see how you feel.
My arm hair constantly standing up, so.
Well, the clock on the wall says six o'clock, so I will call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. We know that one of the commissioners will not be here tonight. He advised us in advance. Willie, I don't know whether Willie's gonna be here or not tonight, Mr. Marchman. But we do have a quorum, so. First item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. What is the pleasure of the commissioners?
I move we adopted as presented.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Agenda is adopted, okay. Old business, minutes from our last meeting, which Kirsten did a great job on. That was a rather cumbersome meeting to handle, and so you did a good job, Kirsten. Thank you very much. What, again, the pleasure of the commission?
I make the motion, we set the minutes.
Seven.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. All right. New business, preliminary plat application for South Harbor. Ron? Okay.
And let me mention here, there's one little, it's just a nitpick, correction, but under new business there in the agenda, it says preliminary play application.
That's been corrected.
Oh, has it been?
It's completely look behind you, that taco's been corrected.
Good.
For your pleasure.
Thank you. If I could just see it, if I had eyes in the back of my head. So, ready?
Okay, Ron, all right.
Good afternoon, commissioners. We have a plat application for, a preliminary plat for South Harbor Unit Two. This area is at the end of Harbor Drive, we're coming in from Carter Road. And it's a total of eighty-four lots that we filter, the developers looking to have developed in this portion. If we recall back in...
Hey, Ron. Take that down so I can hear you better. All the way, there you go. I'm not trying to infect you, I just want to be able to hear.
No, I know, I'm juggling that and I'm juggling the mayor's executive order, so I don't want to get any...
I'm bigger than the mayor, I'll just let me know if he's in trouble.
I'll tell him I said that. So, the, it's a total number of eighty-four lots that's being proposed in this area. In 2007, Uber 2007 preliminary plat application was submitted and it was approved by the planning commission at that time. That has, of course, expired, we're now in 2021, and now a developer has been interested in acquiring this area. There's infrastructure that has already been laid in the area, there is an existing street network that's through this area that we've gated off for quite some time. The, so this preliminary plat is really just essentially the same plat that was filed back in 2006 and approved in 2007 for the area. And we're talking about an area of forty-five point eight-three acres. It's, the developers proposing, single-family homes are just placed in the first phase, Unit One. And so they're just picking up this development and moving forward for the next phase.
Now, there's, what's the difference between eighty-one lots and eighty-four lots?
The developers is proposing eighty-four. However, the, it's split into two here. So, on your sheets, you can see a match line on page three of the reports here, or sorry, the site plan. And at this time, the developer in the, in the Unit Two A, they're proposing forty-eight lots that they're proposing to construct upon approval. And then thirty-six lots afterwards, to which they would need to ask for additional three lots from the city council. Because we only have eighty-one lots available left in the entirety of Mira Lake Development that the city can issue pending any preliminary plats that it requires or the building requests or would like. So, it would be short three if we were to approve this preliminary plat now. It would still require them to request three more lots from the city.
Does this show eighty-one or eighty-four?
Eighty-four.
Okay. Okay. And I saw no amenities on...
That's correct, yes. They're proposing to utilize the existing amenities in the Mira Lake community.
Eighty-four homes, that's quite a few additions to the amenities current, which are pretty heavily taxed.
It is.
May I ask a question too? I was, I was not involved in the original plat approval, but have you seen any renderings of the homes they are intending to build? Now, this is, this is JLC doing this application, correct?
Um, no, this application is actually from Capstone Development Consulting LLC.
What's their relationship to Joffe and the developer?
I don't know their relationships.
Well, and allegedly, the builder for this is going to be Heatherwood Homes?
Heatherland.
Heatherland Homes, from Florida. They're headquartered in Florida. But, so, I guess one of the things, it's, there's some of these lots in here that are practically quarter acre lots. I'll give you a couple of lot numbers if you want them, but lot of things that are about a third of an acre. And they're, well, there's not a lot number I can see on some of these, but some of them are twenty-seven hundredths, twenty-eight hundredths of an acre to thirty-four hundredths, that sort of thing. They're getting kind of, kind of small, and I know that back here on, on the north end of the property, they've got some lots approaching one acre, and some, I see one that is over an acre, just slightly. And you know those lots backing up to the lake are going to contain large expensive homes. I just wondered about if they've said anything about the mix of homes to be built in here? Or anything about the architectural design, or?
I have not had any of these type, those conversations. I'm not sure if the city engineer or the director of our department has. The, we, they have a representative here tonight that might be able to fill in some of these gaps for you. As far as what is proposed, as far as house sizes and the like, middle house sizes. So, I would have to defer to them. Their paperwork, unfortunately, I don't see anything on here that would indicate the middle house size.
Well, I know this is plat approval, but this is one of those things that we approve this and move on. We probably won't get another bite at this apple, so.
No, they did mention in their eighteen-hundred to four-thousand square feet houses priced three-hundred to four-hundred thousand dollars. In some of this fine print that I needed a magnifying glass to read.
Eighteen-hundred to four-thousand?
Yeah.
And the price range was going to go up to four-hundred thousand?
Three-seventy-nine.
You said, you know, that's a hundred dollars a square foot? You can't build a house, you can't even, I mean, I don't know what they've been smoking, or what they think, how dumb they think we are, but you cannot build a house, especially near a lake, on the water for eighty dollars a square foot? Give me a break.
I understand. I mean, as you did say, I mean, it is a preliminary plat application, so it's kind of limited in what we can base our decision off of tonight, or whatever the board can base their decision off of. And of course, you know, price and market and things of that nature, we couldn't do legally. But what we can base it off of, of course, is the neighborhood that this is proposed in. It can be based off of what the plan unit development requirements were, what was approved back in nineteen ninety-seven, amended several times beyond that, from a legal standpoint. But all that we can really do is really, really, from a staff's perspective, is to, is to call the applicants to kind of fill in some of the gaps, refinance.
Because some of the current homes in South Harbor certainly exceed those numbers.
Yes.
Yeah. Especially if they're on the water.
Right, and, and, you know, there may be an average that went into these figures, an average from the existing Unit One. So, I am curious where, how they came up with the numbers, if they did come up with as far as square footage. However, I can only imagine that would probably be some type of, there's some sort of base average there. But a lot of the houses in that area, you are correct, they are substantially larger than four-thousand square feet. But of course, I don't have those numbers, only the city engineer has those numbers.
Did you say the applicant is present?
Yes, Kevin Spindell is here representing the applicant.
Okay, could we hear from Kevin?
Yeah, let's have him.
Good evening. Where are you, Kevin?
Okay, Kevin, would you give your name and address, please?
My name's Kevin Spindell, my address is sixty-three hundred Power Square Road, Atlanta, Georgia, seven-six-hundred, three-zero-three-three-nine.
Okay.
Ron, do we have a mic for Mr. Spindell? Sorry, Kirsten. Sorry.
John, they're not working.
Okay. Well, do the best you can.
I'll try to speak up. Any questions, I can answer for you, sir.
Well, you could pick up on the discussion we were having about housing size and prices. Now, that's probably not your bailiwick, but...
It's not, that would be, you know, the purchasers, Heatherland Homes, as Mr. Flowers mentioned, is the purchaser of this property. And I don't know, so what they're planning to do is, as Mr. Johnson stated, was in that range, but I have a feeling, given the market conditions, those house prices will exceed four-hundred thousand dollars, especially on the lake. That's a premium lot, everybody knows how that works, but I, again, I can't speak to what a builder plans to do.
Now, are they locked in with Heatherwood, or is that...
They have purchased the Phase Two A, they're the forty-eight lots they have purchased. They have, they're not locked in for the remainder of the parcel. And I do have some elevations of their proposed from, of their proposed homes, if you'd like to see them, but again, this is from their website, and I, again, did not, do not control what, you know, what plans they produce. They're the home builder, that is not me, but I'd be happy to share this with you.
Now, I looked on their website, and I did not see any singles detached homes, yeah. They're big on... David? Yeah, I did not see any of these on their, on their website. They build a lot of industrial, commercial property that was shown on their website.
I wonder if it's the same Heatherland Homes?
I don't know. I looked up heatherland.com and...
May have been different, may have been Heatherland Homes, they might have taken you...
Could be. They were pretty elegant properties. Okay, commissioners, you have any other questions for, Ken? David?
If they, if you gain a preliminary plat approval here, well, of course, most of the lots are developed already, right?
The forty-eight, yes, sir.
Are they prepared to close, and how soon will they begin construction?
They've already closed.
So, they've already bought it? Oh, and you're just here representing them to get this, okay.
I'm representing the landowner.
Oh. Well, that answers that.
You, you were the landowner, were you not?
I represent JLC Mira Lake Sub One, which is the landowner.
So, you were the declarant of Mira Lake?
Correct, they are the declarant, correct.
Okay. Ron, I had a question for you. That's fine, Kevin, unless you have some other questions.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, are these setbacks shown, are they acceptable?
The setbacks that I see here on the title page would be acceptable as far as the, being that this is a PUD, and they're proposing this as a part of a preliminary plat, they would be acceptable for any of the PUD standards that we have on record. So, it's relatively, as we, as you may know, I mean, Mira Lake is relatively ambiguous as far as certain standards and the like. We only, we have documents from nineteen ninety-eight on setbacks that's based on the width of a parcel. So, it's a, it's kind of a, and I don't have that information actually with me tonight, but it appears that, based on what I can remember and what I can recall from them, based on the width of some of these properties, all of the widths would, would allow for these types of setbacks that are proposed, the ten feet on the side, the thirty in the rear, and twenty-five in the front, and twenty-five on corner lots.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners?
No.
I believe we need a public hearing for this?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, at this time, if there are any members of the audience that would like to come forward and speak for or against this preliminary plat, please do so.
Yeah, the gentleman in the white shirt.
Yeah, come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name's Ken Willis. I am the vice president of the Mira Lake Community Association, my address is three-zero-one-two Catamaran Cove. And I have a couple of questions. The plat map that I've seen is, does seem consistent, Unit Two A and B, eighty-four lots. Allegedly, a minimum square foot of ninety, ninety feet width, and one-point-eight homes per acre within the community. It sounds like what I heard was that the plans are somewhat different from that, but I don't know. The other thing that I would mention, and again, I don't know if it's in the commission's purview, is that you already mentioned the strain on the amenities. The, the homes in South Harbor at this point, the marketing material that was produced for those homes ten years ago said homes between four-hundred thousand and one million. So, now, ten years later, to put a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar home next to people who built in a, in a neighborhood that was marketed between four-hundred thousand and one million, ten years ago, doesn't seem reasonable to me. So, representing the Mira Lake Community Association, I don't think what is presented is reasonable to that. I mean, the other question I have is what, under what authority is Kevin or Capstone Marketing present something to this board? And Kevin's been helpful, he's helped with some of the things that we've done. He came to the association late last year, announced himself to the then-manager, that he was the representative of the declarant. We, as the newly-elected Board of Directors, have asked Kevin and his lawyer repeatedly for something, some statement, something indicating he has authority that he had, can represent Joffe Land Company. They produced nothing. So, again, it's just, we'd rather things be handled a little bit more consistent to the way they were originally and what was originally intended. And that's my speak. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Anybody else that would like to come forward and speak for or against this preliminary plat? I see none, this is not a resident coming forward, so.
No, no, no resident.
Ron, what is your recommendation?
Ron, we've got one, one public comment here.
Sure, sure.
Excuse me.
Hello, my name is Tony Jones, I live at four-zero-zero-seven Jeffers Point.
Take down your mask, please.
I live at four-thousand-seven Jeffers Point, and he just cleared up a lot of stuff for me. When we bought and built out there, the plans were from, I think my wife, what was it, four-hundred to a million? And we wanted, we looked it up online, also we couldn't find anything but industrial stuff. So, is there any pictures or plans that we can look at to, so it can be comparison to the homes that are already there? That's, that was our biggest concern, because we wanted to be comparable to what's already there from the beginning, but we can't find anything. So, I don't know who can answer that question for me, but that's, we would want it to be the way it was supposed to be when we moved out there. So, I don't know who can address that, or, can we look at the plans or anything? Is there anything available for us to compare apples to apples?
No, the only thing we've seen were those handouts there, and they...
Well, the issue is that they are bound by the covenants and restrictions. And what somebody had in a marketing brochure ten or twenty years ago, not necessarily binding on anybody doing anything today, unfortunately. And there's a lot that occurs in real estate development and home building and sales and things that... And when, when they say, somebody will say something like, "Homes from the two-fifties", well, you know, there's, there's probably going to be right down around two-fifty, there's not going to be any four-hundred or five-hundred thousand dollars up from there, so. I don't, I've been looking myself for all of the facts and conditions here associated with this, and I, I don't see anything that gives us any ability to require, you know, kind of more than what's in the package here, so.
Okay, so, so basically, it doesn't have to be comparable? They can just come in and build at whatever suggested price point they want, basically, is what you're saying?
As long as it meets the restrictions and covenants and city building permits standards and things of that nature, yes.
And that's including zoning, that's including here, that's including anything that was from Mira Lake, that was originally from nineteen ninety-seven? But that, that wouldn't require...
Ron, hold off until Norfolk Southern gets it done.
Yeah.
I don't know if he's done or not.
Thank you.
Okay. So, just to answer the gentleman's question, the, the requirements of zoning and the requirements of the plan unit development that was approved back in nineteen ninety-seven, and it was amended several times, of course, by law can't dictate a price point for any property upon approval, and neither can the city council or the planning commission. And as we know, with time, and as we've seen over the last twenty years, I'm sure you can attest to this more so than anybody, David, with the price movement of houses, the, there's no way for us to have known back in nineteen ninety-seven what, what the developer could potentially build on the properties if a preliminary plat was approved today, or back in two thousand eight or two thousand seven, when it was originally filed. So, there's really no recourse for the planning commission to make in order to require more expensive homes, but as a part of zoning, there's restrictions and there's, there's requirements for the total number of square footage that can be placed on a property as far as a structure is concerned. So, the developer is proposing between eighteen-hundred and four-thousand square feet. Obviously, houses that are bigger usually cost more. But there's, and as a part of Mira Lake's plan unit development, there was no requirements for an actual structure size that I can recollect. There is only for lot sizes, so no building sizes, just lot sizes. So, the planning commission tonight would have the, wouldn't really have any ability to require them to put any type of structure or anything that's an X amount of size that I'm aware of.
Well, and this is just a preliminary plat too, so there will be other opportunities.
Yes, yes, they have to still get through the final plat stage as well, which would go to the City Council. So there's no time for when that final plat may appear or when it may come. So, but they have to get through that in order to build anything.
And I've got an observation here, which, I mean, without the builder, Mr. Spindell didn't have a whole lot of knowledge what the builder's going to do, that's what, that's what he said. But, I mean, these lakefront lots on these, on these oversized premium lots, you know, I don't know where the, where these numbers came from either, the 300, the 300 to 3, 300 to 379.9 comes from. But, you know, I could see some of those, some of that price point landing over here on this other, the smaller lots and whatnot. But, I mean, I, I just don't see these lakefront lots being sold for $379,000. Those in my, in my, you know, I, I have no idea what the builder's going to do or anything, but I mean, those lots are going to support a 700-plus home. And that may be the, where the 4,000 square foot footprint comes from, maybe the larger. I, I really don't know with the limited information we have here. But, uh, you know, are, are these numbers, is this 300 to 379.9? Are those numbers that came from 2004 or '07 or whatever it was when the?
There's no.
We don't know.
We don't know. Assuming that this is a new party, Heatherland Homes, they were not involved in the previous plat application, I can only assume that it's for the current application.
Yeah, and, and it's dated. I mean, the date's on here with these numbers. So that's a.
Do you have any other questions?
The gentleman back.
Just, just a couple more comments. I did look at the Douglas County Sales History, GIS, for the homes in South Harbor. You're not going to find one less than $350,000. The homes that were sold in there were sold in the neighborhood of 400,000 to over half a million dollars. So secondly, while we talk about the premium lots, there's maybe four lots that are premium that are on the water in, in the zoning. You're not going to be able to sell, you know, a 7,000 square foot home if you have to drive through an 1,800 square foot home to get to it. It's just, you know, I mean, we just, we just want some consistency with the, the homes. You can, anybody can go and, and look at the GIS and see the size of the homes that were built in South Harbor. And for the sake of the homeowners that built in that community or that originally purchased that community, it's not reasonable to now downgrade their subdivision.
Thank you. Ron, what's your?
I'm sorry, one more thing, please. I'd ask again, under what authority does Capstone present this proposal to the board, to this commission? Covenants and bylaws state the decorant is Joffe Land Company. They also state that the decorant cannot, the decorant cannot be transferred unless by conveyance of deed. So my understanding is, an agent cannot present on behalf of the decorant, the decorant. Now, that's my layman's understanding of what I read. So I would hope that the council and the commission would do the research to see if there's any substantial to that.
Thank you. Ron, what is the staff recommendation?
So the staff is recommending approval of the plat, just based off of my conversations with the city engineer. And again, I'm filling in for the city engineer tonight and the director of our department. But it is an approval that we're, we're looking for tonight.
Again, it's approval of a preliminary plat, and so, okay. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Ron, is it, I didn't, I didn't see a copy of a sales agreement or deed or anything in here for this. Is there? Excuse me.
So I, I think I know what your question is. So for a preliminary plat application, there's no requirement to submit that information. For a rezoning application, for example, or a variance application, that would be required under the current code. But as far as any changes to, um, you know, the property or as far, or the ownership of the property or the like, the city isn't, wouldn't get involved with that for a preliminary plat application. That would be between the Homeowners Association and the, and the decorant essentially. Not, not between Capstone. Capstone can still submit an application, or any developer can submit an application for preliminary plat, subject to the approval of the, the property owner, which is what we received here. But from what we understand, the property owner, based on our records and the county's records, it's JLC Mirror Lake Sub 1. So as long as they are in approval of that and sign off on that application, then they can move forward, Capstone.
Right, it's their, it's their property. Again, do you have a motion to approve or deny? I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the preliminary plat as presented. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda. Ron?
Thank you, John, commissioners. This is our, this is for 450 Edge Road, RA-02-20. This is the, I believe, third time, you know, you're, they're in front of the Planning Commission. So just as a quick recap, back in, I believe it was November of last year, the applicant originally came forward to the commission for this property in order to rezone it to I-2 from C-2. So that would be going from commercial medium density to industrial medium density. And the commission at that time requested a traffic study of some form to be submitted to them prior to a vote. The applicant came back in March of, of this year, 2021, with that survey, a traffic survey that they submitted. The Planning Commission at that time denied the request for a rezoning recommendation to the City Council. And the, and before it actually reached the City Council, the applicant had some calls with me, with Bobby, and tried to flesh out some of the concerns that the Planning Commission had at that time. They submitted new information since the, the March meeting. And that went on to the City Council, and the City Council remanded it back to the Planning Commission. So that's why we're hearing this for a third time. So the applicant is here to kind of go over some of those changes, just in a nutshell. They are proposing, as a part of an addendum, that was revised twice now. It was revised on April 26th, and also their letter intent was also revised April 26th. That gives some more background information and detail to what their plans are. So just, I guess, reading off of their memo to amend the intersection safety audit here. They have, they have some plans to widen Edge Road to 24 feet along the property frontage. Road classification would remain rural, therefore no curb and gutter is proposed, and roadside ditches will be provided. Second is a roundabout at the intersection of Edge Road and Liberty Road. The third is the developer will contribute the cost of a signal to the city to use towards the roundabout. The city will be responsible for the remaining funding, acquisition of required land, design and construction of the roundabout. And for, provide a turnaround area for vehicles that currently travel down Edge Road. So I did update the staff, the staff report to essentially, and, and there's very small changes here, but it was really just to have as a, a condition of approval, because there's five total here. I think we've gone over them actually in the first meeting. But the fifth one is the only one that has changed, which is installation of all off-site traffic improvements that are indicated in the traffic survey and traffic survey addendums that were dated April 26, 2021. So just the updated addendum items was really the only changes here, along with the site plan, which now shows a roundabout.
So basically, that's contained in this memo that you provided?
Yes, sir, the changes, yes.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the commissioners to Ron?
No.
I mean, it seems like they have made a concerted effort to try to accommodate the traffic problems that we were concerned about previously, so.
Yeah, so the gap that was between the second meeting where the, the city, or the last meeting where the Planning Commission sent in a, a negative recommendation for this, they made changes and proposed a traffic light. And then we had further conversations after the City Council remanded it back to the Planning Commission. I don't know if it was before or after. But it has changed now to a traffic circle, which may be more manageable for the city overall.
Well, and they'll eliminate the truck parking on Edge Road, I believe, in their change too, so.
That is correct, yes.
And a turnaround there for trucks.
That's right. And the parallel parking that we currently experience, I'll say, with the Pilot Gas Station would be eliminated as a part of this plan.
Okay. Any questions?
Is there somebody from the developer here?
Yes, the, the representatives for the developer are here.
Okay, could you have them come forward?
Good evening. I'm Lauren Laird, I'm with the Civil Engineer, I'm the Civil Engineering, Abrelin Associates, and the developer's here as well.
Okay. You heard the concerns that we'd expressed in our previous meetings, and it looks like you've made a pretty good concerted effort to accommodate those, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, so we actually, like Ron said, we went to the City Council meeting while proposing the light and as well as a warning beacon at the top. And at the City Council meeting, that's where it was suggested that it was possibly the intent of the city to actually put a roundabout there. So we did have another meeting with Ron and Mr. Barber as well. And so that's why it was amended again to include the roundabout as an option.
Okay. Any questions for?
I don't really have a question. I just, you know, this looks a lot better than it did, met a lot of the concerns.
Thank you.
I'm not a traffic engineer, I just sit in it sometimes. But, you know, the roundabout, if they, if staff thinks that's going to keep things moving right there, you know, a traffic light would be better, but what do we do around here to get traffic lights?
Yeah, there will not be a traffic light there.
Right.
It's also a maintenance cost to the city as well, a traffic light in comparison to a roundabout. It would be substantially more, and I'm not, and I, again, I'm, I tell, I tell her this all the time, that I am not a traffic engineer, every single conversation we have, I say the same. But I can, I can really only imagine that it would be, you know, besides the cost effectiveness, it would probably be a little bit safer being at constantly rolling, especially with the hills going northbound on Liberty Road and coming over that hill. So at least traffic is continuously moving, so there's no, hopefully no queuing that goes further south by the hill.
Well, I think widening that turn onto Edge Road certainly is a significant improvement too, from what we had before.
Yes, so we are proposing along the entire frontage to widen it to 24 feet. And then as you get closer to the traffic circle, you know, it starts to feather out, and so it would get wider there.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions, I would like to open to a public hearing and state your name and address, please.
Nancy Memm, 17 Hagerie Trail, Villarica, Georgia. In March, I sent an email to City Council members and to some of the Villarica staff, telling them what I thought and my opinions. And because it's an easy access from I-20 going west, does not justify putting this property. It's ugly. When you're going west, this is the first exit to Villarica. It does not actually show what Villarica can be and be unique. And yes, I chair the Villarica Historical Preservation Commission, but that is not why I'm here. Although the beauty and the integrity and, and everything else of Villarica is part and parcel of this. At first, I thought a roundabout, a roundabout might be a good idea, but you're looking at a state road and a county and a city road in a roundabout. This is a very dangerous intersection. We have enough commercial industries, storage units, auction sites, and sometimes staging areas that cause many of us as homeowners in that area a headache, a lot of issues. For example, we have been in our house for 31 years. For the first 10 years, there was no problem. But since then, with the other places that have gone on to Edge Road, and the fact that there are no lights on Edge Road, which I recently asked and sent a message to our city to put streetlights on Edge Road, because there are none after Pilot, and it's a dangerous road because it moves back and forth. We have drivers, truck drivers, from industrial trucks, commercial trucks, personal trucks with U-calls and with trailers on the end of it. And apparently, either they can't read when it says dead end, or they believe the dead end is South Wilson Street, and they come on to Edge, into Maple Valley, into our subdivision, which has one exit and one entrance only. There are two cul-de-sacs, I happen to live on the first one, there are three houses there. All of our houses in our subdivision have at least an acre and a half, we have almost four. Every time a truck goes in there, no matter what size it is, it cannot make the cul-de-sac and backs up. And I cannot tell you how much money we have spent repairing those trucks that have backed up into our lawn, and no one has ever agreed to pay or help pay for the damages to that property. I think that's atrocious. Our neighbors on Maple Valley Drive have often, in the late evenings, had to come out and help the truckers of all sizes get back out in the road. We even had to call the police sometimes for help, and they have damaged the front of their property pulling them in there. In my opinion, we should do what Douglasville was doing. Douglasville would just hire Mill Creek out of Buckwheat Town to put in townhouses and stores and other places where people could shop. Maybe that 25 acres is not big enough for that at this point, but it is big enough to put something that is attractive and not ugly. If you go off of I-20, off of, on exit 26 to the right, yes, you've got the shopping center and you've got Mirror Lake. If you go across the highway to us, it is ugly. And not indicative of what Villarica should look like. 101 has been an industrial area for a long time, so keep it there. Do not add an unpleasant entrance to our best-kept secret of Villarica. Beer houses and truck stops tend to devalue our homes. Besides, Edge Road is also considered historical. Believe it or not, that's where our cotton fields were after the gold went to Delonica. And that is what provided Villarica with an economy that it needed to have before even Stockman came in or anything else. So it is absolutely a very valuable property, and it added a lot to Villarica. So I'm saying that, you know, put something else in there. If you put something else in there that is attractive, fine. I don't believe that widening that area is going to do anything. A street light, yes, because when we go off, and yes, they do have a signs on Edge Road to keep those habs off. However, you still have that road with a hill. You come over that hill and it's dangerous. If I'm driving by myself, I really almost want to go into the Pilot and come out a different road so that I'm the one going over the hill. If someone is not with. If somebody is not with me, if I am alone, and remember, I am also deaf, so I depend a lot on my service dog to let me know if there's a car coming to my right, and if I can't see it or hear it, then it's dangerous. And somebody is going to have an, there's been accidents before, and there will be another one. I even asked to have a speed bump put on and was told no, because it's a state road on Liberty Road. But as we come in there, and it sounded like a good idea, as I said, for a roundabout, but that's not the answer. It isn't going to approve any cars coming over that hill. And for many of us, we moved into this neighborhood 31 years ago because it was a beautiful place, and many of our homes do back up to the two lakes that are in there, and so we respectfully ask that you give other thoughts to something else that's in there, not another warehouse. We don't need it, we don't want it. We want to have a nice subdivision where most of our homes are going from anywhere from 375 on up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mimms.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes. Your name and address, please.
My name is Jay Patel, 1650 Edge Road, Villarica, Georgia. I represent the American Inn and Suites on Edge Road. I was here for the initial meeting as well. Some of our concerns were having that the trucks going on Edge Road as well. We see that there's a roundabout. Our concern still is traffic and how, what that turnaround can do with, especially with Pilot being there and the warehouse across the street backing up to the hotel piece as well, it couldn't, you know, cause traffic jam for us on that side, including noise as well. Our, our recommendation is trying to still say, hey, we're okay with the warehouse, but finding a different entrance to the warehouse. I know, I can't recall correctly, but was it off of Liberty Road they can come in, correct? But I don't know if they can exit out, right?
They can't make a left out.
They can't make a left out. So I don't know what can be done there, but the roundabout, the noise, it's kind of our concerns at this point.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Mike Arthur. I live at 114 Maple Valley Drive here in Villarica. My wife and I moved to Villarica four years ago from Douglasville, primarily to get out of the traffic that's in Douglasville right now. At that time, I was working off of Thornton Road on, in West Fork over there, was where my office was, and there was a tremendous, as most of you know, a tremendous amount of truck traffic that's generated by the Norfolk Southern intermodal ramp. I seem to recall when that ramp was built out there that there would be minimal traffic on Thornton Road. Now, if you want to believe that, Gulburn said on Thornton Road.
Sir, why don't you wait until Norfolk and Southern is?
Sir?
Why don't you wait for a few minutes while Norfolk and Southern passes by? They never end. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. If you want to believe that the truck traffic is minimal on Thornton Road, Gulburn said on Thornton Road one day and spent about an hour over there. I realized that this, this development here with this warehouse is going to be substantially smaller in truck numbers than what you have generated on Thornton Road and out of that intermodal ramp up there. But the fact remains that those trucks are heavy, they carry a lot of weight onto Edge Road, onto Liberty Road, and I'm here to tell you right now that they're going to tear your roads all to pieces out there. I'm just afraid that when, when all this is said and done, five years from now, the city of Villarica is going to be out there reworking roads at Villarica's expense. I don't believe personally that a roundabout, I think a roundabout is the flavor of the year, the flavor of the century, if you will. You see them showing up everywhere in this country. I don't think that they're, I don't think that they're wrong. I don't think that they're right in a lot of places, but I really think that this deserves a lot more consideration, and I understand, I understand their, their process. I've been in, I've been in some development myself before. The roundabout's obviously the cheaper way to go. I mean, if you start throwing numbers at it, it's going to cost you some money to put traffic lights out there to control that traffic, but I really think that's the best way to go. And I think that that's going to keep accidents, as Ms. Mimms said, who's a neighbor of mine, I think that the accidents is a real possibility coming over that hill. I can give you an example. Two days ago, I was leaving Edge Road or leaving my house, coming out on the Liberty Road at about 7:15 in the morning, and there was a car came over the hill, and I guarantee you, he was doing 60 miles an hour. And I just did get out of his way. So I'm, I'm saying that, that I really think this thing needs some further consideration from the developer. I'm not opposed to development. I think development's great if it's handled in the correct way. And I think this traffic is one of the major issues that, that the city is facing here and us as residents. As Ms. Mimms said, there's, there's been numerous times in the last four years since we moved in Maple Valley out there, that I've personally gone out there and had to back a truck out from the cul-de-sac all the way back out to Wilson Street to get him out of there, because obviously they either can't read or don't care. So, you know, where are we going to be when we've got trucks coming in there at night to that warehouse and either can't read or don't care? And come down there and get in our neighborhood and tear up people's yards and stuff like that? So that, that's a real concern of everybody out there, including myself. We moved out here, as I said, to get rid of the, or try to get rid of some of the traffic, but it seems like it's, it's following us. I think it's going to generate a tremendous amount of traffic in addition to what Pilot has there on the Edge Road, and I just don't think a roundabout's going to do it, guys. I really don't. And I appreciate you listening to me tonight. I've been around development and, and construction, road construction, et cetera, pretty much for 45 years. And so I just feel like that there's some other ways to, to address this. I think it needs more stay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Mimms?
I have never thought, and one of the things that I mentioned to the city council members when I sent them an email, the American Inn that is off of Edge Road has been there for a number of years, and I want to tell you that they landscape it and it's beautiful, they take care of the roses, and it looks nice. It's small. When my brother comes to visit, and he's got a large family, there's not enough room in our house, even though we've got four bedrooms and three and a half baths, it still is not always enough for them, so they've been going to the New Holiday Inn and then coming back to us. My thought is that if you had something set back that allowed perhaps for some more rooms besides the American Inn, that the people in Mirror Lake, who may be attending the University of West Georgia for events, might be able to stay there because they're closer to their family or for any other family events or reunions and parties. We don't have anything at that inn that looks decent, other than, as I said, all of the other warehouses and storage units and, as you've done, even truck repair or whatever it is signage on there. The whole part of Edge Road is most awfully, I don't mind if it's going to be light industrial, but to make it be heavy, not industrial rather than commercial, I think is, is wrong, and again, it's a disservice to all of us and certainly is a devaluation of our homes.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not already spoken? Turning back over to staff, bearing in mind, you know, listening to the comments, we have a proposal in front of us, and we have to make a decision on what is presented to us, not on what might possibly come in that area. It's been there for a long, long time. This is the first thing that's come forward, so we don't have the luxury of saying, no, this, that. So we have a proposal before us, and what is the staff recommendation?
Staff's recommendation is in approval with conditions, and I've outlined five conditions here. We've, we've gone over them actually in the first meeting, and it's, if the chair would like me to go over them again, I can very well do that. Conditions?
I think.
I'm fine.
I'm sorry?
No, he didn't need to go over.
No, that's all right.
Sure, okay. But it is approval with five different conditions here, and all of it, of course, is, and one of the conditions is for a, for the traffic study and all of the improvements that have been listed in that study to be followed by the applicant. All of the off-site improvements would need to be installed.
So the recommendation is to approve with the conditions as presented?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve this request in accordance with the staff conditions, the five conditions here, listed here.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Again, to the audience, bear in mind, this was a proposal that is presented to us. So, now, it still goes before the city council?
Yes, it does.
So you have a chance to comment there again, so.
Yes, so the meeting would be on July 13th, I believe it is, July 13th. There's a work session at 3:00 PM, and there's a regular session at 6:00 PM. The applicant would be heard at both. So there's no, there's no meeting in June for the city council, as we, as we know, so this had to be kicked off to July.
Good. All right. That concludes the agenda items. Staff? Any other comments?
No other comments at this time.
Okay. Any other public comments on anything? Okay. I move, I don't move? Somebody want to move or?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Seven o'clock, not too bad?